Alright, then here we are, here we go. Welcome to December, everybody. It's tunnel meeting number 126. And today we're joined by Duke, Stephen, Vani, Ashley and Sergio. Thanks for being here. It's a small crowd today. Maybe the holiday season is kicking in for people. And as you can see on screen, a little outline of today's agenda. Starting off with a couple of mentions and then a quick update on the budgets for Q1. Then we have Stephen from Archive Workgroup on their open source paradigm. And after that, I would like to discuss a little bit on the end of year report. And there's some input needed there from workgroups and basically everybody. So yeah. If there's any room left after that, we can discuss open topics or questions. And a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of people that are in tune and aligned with the mission and vision of SingularityNet. And that want to help, to contribute to it. And we have a wide range of topics on which we have workgroups, self-organizing workgroups. So if you're interested in helping out, do up onto our Discord server and you will find a how to join section that will tell you how to join. Alright, with that, with the way, a couple of mentions. First one is for tomorrow, actually. That's 13:30 UTC. There's the Nunnet community, all hands. This is on Twitter, X. It's a space. You can just chill and listen in. You can also raise hands and speak up. Do recommend. Then this Thursday, at, my screen is in front of it. At 13 UTC, there's a decentralized governance skillshare session even by the Onboarding Workgroup. And maybe I can ask somebody to give a little pitch. Sorry to put you on the spotlight out, but if you want, you can.
Yeah, I mean, Onboarding Workgroup has been doing a range of little skillshare sessions based on what we've got in our Skillshare matrix about the things people most want to learn. And this one is just an introduction to decentralized governance. And there'll be a bit of history in there and a bit of how you can tell the difference between centralized and decentralized governance. And chance for a bit of a Q and A and a discussion after.
Martin, looking forward to that one. Then on Friday, 18 UTC. There's presentations by the participants of the Deep Funding Hackathon and a winner announcement. So yeah, do check that out. And then one more date for December 8th, so next week. It's the deadline of the current RFPs. If you're interested, I'm sure you're aware of this, but I felt it was important enough to at least call it out. It got extended by two weeks, I believe. So yeah, the current deadline and that will be the final deadline, not just the current deadline. It's on December 8th, 12 UTC. And then a quick topic I'd like to discuss with, well, actually the people in the room, is the tunnel schedule for December. With, yeah, some workgroups, quite some workgroups, I feel, that are basically going into holiday mode after Friday, the 13th. So after, yeah, next week, pretty much. And I wanted to raise like, well, when should we have a tunnel? When, yeah, when after the New Year should we return? I think that one is relatively straightforward, to be honest. But yeah, just looking at the calendar, could do one next week. Could do one the week after that, on the 17th of December. Or not. So yeah, I figured, let's put it to the room and get some input there. Any thoughts? A chat is fine as well.
I think my vote would go to make next week the last one, because this one's quite quiet. And if it's even quieter next week, then...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say the same thing too, because I think almost every guild or workgroup has had this reduced attendance, maybe from the last two weeks or so. So for African Guild, we had to, we had to stop or end our meetings on the last Thursday of November. So we're no longer having meetings. Till, I mean, literally just started to break because we're having really, really low turnout. And yeah, so I guess next week can be the last one.
Makes sense. Thank you. Any opposing views in the room? Because I think this kind of topic, we can kind of finalize right here, right now.
And when are we back on the 7th of January, do you think, or what?
I do guess so. With January 1st being a Wednesday, I think by Tuesday, everybody should be recovered somewhat. Also, if we push it one week later, then we would have close to a full month of no tunnels. That feels a bit much. But I would personally say 7th is, yeah, makes a lot of sense. But again, it's not my call as such. Do speak up if you feel different. Or think it's a good idea. Or just don't care and you'll see whenever it shows up in the calendar. That's also fine. Alright, then. Yeah, unless there's some point, really good reasons to change this, I think, next week. So 10th of December will be the last one for the year and then returning on 7th of January. Cool. Moving on. Yeah, I'd like to give a quick update on the budgets for Q1. We had a governance call earlier today to look at the consent process results for which the deadline was yesterday at 12 UTC, I imagine, midnight. So yeah, this round, we had input by 33 contributors, which I do think is a record. So that's pretty awesome. And well, it was even better because only two workgroups received objections to their proposals. And one of those even was something that was already corrected. So in practice, yeah, there's only one workgroup proposal to sort out. I did put a sheet in the governance channel on Discord. So yeah, it's anonymized, but it's the full results. And Oh yeah, so yeah, during today's governance call. Basically, we agreed, we shared the objections and the reasoning behind it. We went through it. And this relates to AI sandbox and Think Tank. And they basically agreed to work on a response and then by coming Thursday during the open governance session at 14 UTC, as you can see on screen, yeah, we'll try to work through the responses. And also hopefully we'll have the person that has objected. It's anonymous, so we don't know who. Hopefully he or she will step forward and then we can well, make progress. I'm inclined to, I'm hopeful to say finalize. That we'll have to, we'll have to see about that. And yeah. Any questions on the topic or comments or thoughts? Yeah, Stephen put in chat, "Good to see it wasn't so contentious this time." I do agree, but also nothing we had, yeah, how to say, the way we structured it right now. We had quite some contention earlier in the process by establishing workgroup max budget. And yeah, the idea during, I got during today's governance call was that people feel like that did, well, help. Make it more straightforward after that.
Well, that's good because I know there was some disagreement or contention about the budget levels. So it's good that it's had a positive outcome.
I can only agree. It was introduced as a one-quarter experiment, but if I would personally make the decision right now, I'd say we keep this approach. But yeah, there's going to be lots of retrospective. So that will be figured out in the future, whether we do it again or not. But yeah, I don't know, it was like almost a surprise when checking the results, like. Wait, yeah, well, so yeah, no, it was good. Alright, I think that covers the topic. I don't see any raised hands or hear anybody speaking, so we'll move on. And that brings us to Stephen. The open source paradigm by Archive Workgroup. So I guess I'll stop sharing and then you can take over.
Okay. Okay, let's see if I can get this right. Can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, this is a very brief presentation about Archive Workgroup's open source paradigm. But also generally, what would an open source paradigm look like? Maybe for the ambassador program or, you know, how to communicate this in a very piffy way, if we could. So I'll start now. The SingularityNet Archive Workgroup encourages a decentralized approach to problem solving. Where individuals from diverse backgrounds can contribute their expertise and perspectives. So what is open source? Open source is rooted in the principles of transparency, collaboration, iterative improvement and community ownership. So looking at transparency. So we use open source tools and methods to promote transparency and visibility of decisions. So our entire decision-making process is visible to all community members. And accountability and trust. So every contribution to discussion and decision is documented and accessible. So that fosters accountability amongst and trust amongst participants. So a good example of that is we archive our workgroup meetings and we track our decisions and actions on GitHub, which is an open source platform. And our working processes are tracked on a public project board, which is updated in Fort Lauderdale. Well, it was Fort Lauderdale, but that's monthly stand-up meetings. So collaboration. So governance or the way we open source governance, that's where our challenges require multi-disciplinary approaches. So that's part of an open source paradigm in the sense that there is not one way to do something. So the diverse perspectives. And that allows for cross-pollination of ideas. It may be inefficient sometimes, it may cause disagreements sometimes. But it creates the potential for innovation through cross-pollination, pollination of ideas and collaborative problem solving. And you know, the Archive Workgroup, we are building an open source governance infrastructure along with other people. We facilitate regular working meetings using, as I mentioned, the project board. And our work connects together development solutions, community governance and information management. So on to iterative improvement. So the iterative nature of open source development enables rapid, continuous improvement. So I mean, we can plan ahead and we can budget and set all these budgets and so on. But often things change. So there's a need for to respond to that and to have continuous improvement through change. So rapid prototyping, what we put out there needs to be tested and prototyped and iterated. And that's so that we can also take on real-world feedback, ensuring that government initiatives remain relevant and effective. And we're obviously quite, you know, that goes beyond the Archive Workgroup as well. Then on to community ownership. So community ownership promotes cost-effectiveness because open source tools and methods eliminate the need for proprietary software licenses. So that makes it more cost-effective and more, so more cost-effective solution for governments and communities with limited resources. And we do have limited resources. Accessibility, the accessibility fosters inclusive participation and powers underrepresented groups to contribute to decision-making processes. And sustainability. So by fostering a sense of community ownership, open source initiatives are more likely to be sustainable over the long term. So stakeholders are invested in the success of a project. And they, because they are able to contribute to ongoing maintenance and evolution through the iterative iteration I mentioned earlier. So that's it, really. So it's kind of short and sweet, but it's supposed to be just to look at the main pillars, if you like, of open source paradigm. So thank you, and I'll stop sharing.
Nice one. Thank you. Should I ask for, well, ironically, let's just go ahead and do it. Are there any questions in the room or comments?
Yeah, any questions or observations? It's obviously even that presentation's, the aim is to provide, you know, produce something that can be very quickly referenced and, you know, communicated. So it'd be interesting to see any feedback, you know, how also an open source, you know, what the ambassador's program, open source paradigm should look like as well. So because that's what I also had in mind was not just the Archive Workgroup, but and also how that aligns with SingularityNet as well.
I'll break the silence.
I say, I say, I see good as feedback would be appreciated as well.
Oh, I really love what you're doing. I keep having this, this, and it's a bit of a future outlook still. I have it for some, for a while already, but it's hard to, I don't know, materialize. And like you mentioned, capturing the steps in decision-making and in my mind, this is all, this is something that, like, we do somewhat. We do capture, like, in the meeting summary, right? There's decision items. But I keep feeling like if we would connect that to, whether it's audio or video, it doesn't really matter. But like, the moments where it's actively, that can even be transcript, where it's actively being set in a meeting. I don't know, I have to, it's hard to put the words.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, what we tried to do, and the law of work here done by Vani and Andre on this. Is try to, is not to dictate to workgroups how they should run, because that's the essence of a decentralized community, you know. And of course, this has its frustrations, you know. So but there still needs to be, there's a kind of balance between that and having some sort of means to capture decision-making. So over time, what the Archive Workgroup focused, boiled down to was what are decisions, what are action items? That's really quite key, because that enables you to capture that. Now, different workgroups may do that in different ways. And but the open source aspect of that is that it's transparent, you know, so that it's captured and it's on an open source platform. Okay? Now, what platform, that could be a different, different, accessed in very different ways. That's the other aspect of open source. It's not proprietary. So it allows you to, it allows multiple workgroups and, you know, across the whole ecosystem to access it. That's really key. And we seem to, okay, we have our faults, but we're working towards that. So when you talk about the future, Peter, that's like what we're working to. And it's like, again, the iterative nation, it takes time. You know, we're working towards that. So I mean, we're having, you know, feedback is welcome also on our open source tools itself. So Vani's gonna keep in here.
I just realized, Peter, that since you weren't here last week for workgroup updates, you missed our shiny new dashboard, which I've just put in, which allows you to track decisions and action items. And I think what we're looking at as well is a kind of comparative approach. So that, you know, sometimes one workgroup will make one decision and another workgroup will make an opposite decision. And they don't speak to each other, you know, about something to do with the whole program. And I think, you know, making different decisions in different workgroups, there's nothing wrong with it. But as long as people know what's been decided and, yeah, I mean, one of the ones that comes to mind is when Treasury used to kind of spend more time discussing some of the budget decision process. And then governance would decide something else. And then you'd go to a meeting and, you know, you'd sort of go, hang on a minute. So I think being able to, and also doing things like being able to track which workgroups are making decisions for the whole program and which ones are just making internal decisions. You know, it's, neither of them is bad or good. It's just interesting to be able to see the process a little bit more clearly. And I'm sort of hoping with this dashboard that people will start to get why we ask things like, what was the decision rationale and stuff like that? Because there's so much more to just recording and record-keeping a decision. It's also like what voices were heard, who was there? You know, you might, we might notice that, for example, decisions always get made when Duke is in a meeting, for instance, and if he's not there, nothing gets decided, you know, for instance. So I just think there's a lot of things we can explore with a dashboard like this. But we have to know what questions we want to ask about our decision-making and that can reveal, you know, because open source is not just about the tools you use, it's also the mindset. So yeah. And I think same decentralization.
Yeah, picking up on that theme, more looking really much further ahead, like the vision thing, Peter. I noticed in the RFPs that there's, there's one RFP that brought me interest about representing, how to represent knowledge, you know, through, through, through different ways, you know, using graph databases, for example, you know, so. And that's often seen as a bit unattainable for people who are new to AI. It's just quite, you know, advanced. It's a part of the AGI, part of the work that's been done, you know, in other parts of SingularityNet. But we're starting to realize actually that the tool that Vani was talking about and Andre's building is the beginning of how does knowledge representation, how does it, how does it work in practice in a community, in our community, yeah? And we'd learn these lessons, you know. And there is a part where we are developing, we do, we are developing a large language model interface into our data. But what we've realized actually that, and this has all been, is going to be, you know, come up shortly. Is that you can't just like dump the contents of all the text of everything that everyone said into a large language model and expect anything coherent backward. And what we're discovering is we need, is that, is that balance between structured data and unstructured? Unstructured, so you allow expression, if you like, and that, that gives you, that complements large language models and things like, and that kind of generative AI. But not allowing generative AI to run away with itself to such an extent that people's decisions are mis, and actions are misrepresented, you know, so you need that structured data. So what we're realizing that we need to move on to much more, the precursor to generative AI, to coherent generative AI is, if you like, to not start with AI, to start with structures, structured data, to do a bit of data mining, to see. Okay, and this is essentially how we can capitalize on what can seem at the coalface quite slow. Like all this decision-making, all these workgroups, all these budget discussions, et cetera. That's, if we can capture that data and do some data mining of that and see what kind of questions would be asked of it, what kind of coherent questions would be asked of that, then we can move towards how that would be complemented with generative AI. And ultimately, that would feed into something much more advanced like graph databases, like the Quest for Repose. So it is, yes, that's far away, you know, but it's, you know, hopefully we can start to move in that direction. And you can say that, we can say that, we can say, you know. And also the other aspect of it, which I didn't mention so much in this presentation, because we're also realizing the importance is the didactic nature of what we're doing, the self-tuition, the self-learning, okay? It's not, and this was related to accessibility. So we try to include all, we are, you know, quite diverse, we have different skillsets and different levels of knowledge. So it can seem really inefficient from the outside. It's like, oh, why haven't you built this tool? Why haven't you applied this generative model to this, this and this? No, no, we need to say. Well, you know, we do need to do that, but we need to sort of show how to do that. So people can, and that's another thing we're trying to do in the Archive Workgroup, which can seem, so we, 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 we do all this work trying to, trying to work with people to how to represent their decisions, those decisions go into a tool. And we manipulate that and then we see, do people understand that manipulation? Do they, and that's a point of, it's related to ethical concerns around AI as well. So I could carry on, but sorry. But yeah, that, that is, it is related to this kind of vision quest thing, Peter, which, and also hopefully we see a path for all of us towards the more high, well, I don't want to say use that high level, the more advanced use of AI in the deep funding, yeah? So I'm starting to see that there may be a pathway to that.
It surely does look like, it's gonna be small steps, right? But would fully agree on there being a pathway. No, great stuff. I'll have to check out the dashboard. I indeed was not aware. I managed to miss that. Also noting that I didn't see the upload of the tunnel. I did check for it, but when I checked, it wasn't online yet. I'll not check right now, but yeah.
I think there was a glitch with the recording, so I think it might have only just gone up, because it wasn't saved, it should have been saved. So yeah.
Well, then, yeah, at least it's not lost, so that's, that's.
But just to say, if anybody listening is interested in this stuff that we've been talking about, the next Archives meeting is tomorrow. So come along and find out more. Add your thoughts.
It would be at 13 UTC. Just to add to that.
Yeah, that's right. I was kind of fudging that because I wasn't sure, but no, it is.
Well, the time changes. Yeah, I think that's right now, yeah.
Alright, anybody, any further comments, questions, songs, anything? Cool. Yeah, again, thanks a lot for giving that little overview.
Thank you, Peter. Let me do that. Cheers.
Well, it's just, it's super solid. I mean, you present this now, but basically this is how you've been operating for years, right? So yeah, it's, I appreciate that a lot. It's, let's say.
Actually, I do think of something else that I could mention is that just, we've been trying to look at open source in the context of record-keeping. Record-keeping raises a lot of issues around privacy, data protection and so on. But it also raises interesting, I think, ideas about, especially in a decentralized community like ours, around how we open source the data that we hold. And I think it's just worth referencing the work that Andre has been doing around when somebody submits a document in a meeting summary, you know, you put in a link to a document. And then what we have is like a distributed archive. Different people in the community hold or own documents and they could just delete them if they chose. So the work that, you know, we've been doing on that is, you know, that we automate a copy of, an archival copy of it. But then this raises questions about which is the real source of truth, you know, if a document keeps existing. So I'll just link a little doc that I'll just link a little doc that we made way, way back now in May, where we were talking about how do you open source a document? How do you make it community owned? It was kind of inspired by the um decentralisation blueprint document and some of the issues that were raised there about, ah, yeah, closing comment, closing it to comments and at what point do you do that and all that. So, yeah, record keeping in a decentralised community raises some really interesting questions around how we community own the data that we hold. I think it's a little bit easier with the actual meeting summaries themselves because they are instantly in a database and instantly kind of added to a Git book that's backed up to a GitHub repo and that, you know, it just, it they are therefore open source, but linked documents has been, yeah, a hassle, but we've got there. I really think we have. So this is an interesting way that we could show other organisations how they can have that that balance between open source and kind of distributed ownership around their organisation, because, you know, most organisations, there will be documents owned by one person, by another person and so on, rather than, you know, very few people manage to organise it, so it's all in one place, but you don't need to.
Yeah, I'll I'll just end to on the on the presentation, I would just say. Yes, it was about the archive workgroup, but also the question of what I was aiming for as well was ha- uh very, something very brief, um accessible and to the point, and also something that may be quite general. So any feedback about, you know, does this represent the whole ambassador programmes for you on open source, for example? You know, those those car- those four pillars or those four sections and again, and does it re- does it reflect Singularity Net's um approach to open source as well? Um. So that's really what I was aiming for, to see um how we use open source in relation to not just our technology, but our governance and how we understand it as a community, how we, you know, and that would include things like deep funding as well as the ambassador programme.
Absolutely. It's interesting questions because, well, we don't want to force ways of working to work groups. At the same time, if we want to force anything, then I I guess the open source is not that evil to force, right? It's like.
Um. Yeah, I mean, it's not detaching to people. It it is does is what I've said in that presentation. Does it ref-? It's not so much you should do this way. It's more, does this reflect um how we, you know, collectively use open source tools and how how we see that, you know, so that was the the idea, really.
Fair. Um. Gonna keep that in mind for the next agenda item. Um. Uh, but yeah, if people want to um share their opinions, by all means do. Uh, just for a bit of context, the next agenda item is on a end of year report. So in theory, we could ask workgroups how they relate to to this approach to open source.
Yeah, that'd be great. And also be interesting to see the diversity of perspectives, like how it either accounts factors, you know, uh, do people disagree or to have I, particularly if I've left something out, you know, as well, you know?
Yeah, fair. Um, just a quick check on the chat. Um. Is this a public document or was the link shared? And if it's open, could you share it? Because I
Yeah, I will. I I will upload it tomorrow. It's a PowerPoint presentation, so I need to um uh upload, convert it and then I'll create a link to it. So um not available right now, but it will be available by tomorrow.
Awesome. All right, um, seeing there's no hands and no questions, I guess we can move on to the next uh topic. I'll quickly return to screen share. Uh, hmm, quickly, he said. Yeah, um. It's the most impressive of slides, I guess, uh, this one. Uh, basically, it's um on the end of year report. Um. Bottom line, there's input needed by not only workgroups, um but also uh individuals. Um, right now it's more an idea than a concrete uh document outline even. Um, so, yeah. Seeing that we have a whole bunch of workgroups, I feel it makes sense to have every workgroup um share a little. Um. Basically on what they did for the last year. And if you combine that, well, you're getting pretty close to an end of year report. Um, of course, there's there's um kind of meta topics which which are, yeah, different from the workgroup uh level, but but still. Um. I just wanted to to put it to the to the group. Uh, doesn't make sense to to ask workgroups to contribute to this? This is complete nonsense. Um. Any ideas on on making it more awesome, basically? Um. So, yeah, just as as a very starting point of the concept, I wanted to to touch on it a little. And this is the moment for audience engagement. So feel free to speak up.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to us, ask workgroups to contribute, but I think we just need to ask them to take a bit of a step back. And instead of looking at the detail of, oh, we did this, we did that, we arranged to meet on a Monday instead of a Tuesday. No one needs to know that. It's like, what has been the main thrust of your work over this year? And like, what have you? Doesn't have to be about achievements necessarily, like. I know, I would think of trying to look at it in terms of like a theory of change. What were you trying to achieve? What changes were you trying to see? And did you see them? That kind of thing.
Yeah, fair. And a very valid point. Nobody wants like a two hundred item bullet list. Um. Yeah, okay, so, um.
Yeah, I think I kind of, just two things. One is this, um because we we mentioned like there's not many people around now. Is is that going to be a problem for feedback into the report as one thing? And the second thing is a kind of just echoing what Vanny was saying. It is if it's a report that's going to reflect the ambassador programme, it'd be good to see it 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 kind of communicates that in a quite effective way. So it's not like, as Vanny said, it's got a great deal of detail necessarily, but much more. You know, the the great variety of what the work that the workgroups are doing and how the kind of the passion and the kind of investment that each workgroup puts into it, really. Um, good to see. Sorry, Vanny.
No, I was also just thinking, I was thinking back to that um Twitter space a while ago with um Ocean. And I remember you saying, Peter, something to the effect of what a few of us keep saying, which is that this ambassador programme isn't kind of it's not the same as a lot of ambassador programmes. It kind of does more. It's not just about creating content to get more people, to create content to get more people. We do have a community and we do look at governance and we do look at um how we run ourselves and that kind of thing. So I'd I'd kind of try and frame it that way to kind of look at what is the point of this ambassador programme? Because it's kind of more than the usual, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I fully agree. I mean, that's that's kind of the 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 origin as well, like um educating people about what we're actually doing, rather than um, ah, you're an ambassador programme, you have Zili campaign and a video channel. Um. Yeah, just, yeah, right now we don't, we don't uh really have this um in a structural way. So that's that's kind of where the, well, end of year, you know, kind of makes sense. Um, if you have to pick a moment in the year. Yeah, it kind of feels decent. Um. Yeah, it makes me think about what Stephen said on the time of year also, um, like um, on potential low interaction um by workgroups. At the same time, I kind of feel like you shouldn't block it on a potential blocker. Um.
Would it be worthwhile putting it, I I I'm not, I'm not suggesting, you know, this week maybe like uh to the end of January. I'm just thinking if people are away and we come back, uh, um. Gives them a chance at the beginning of January. Or is that just delaying things unnecessarily?
Hmm.
I would say the end product is more important than the publishing date. Um, so in a way, yeah, no, that that might be. This is just me putting some stuff on a slide. It's not a any any kind of decision like, ah, we should publish it the first week of January. Uh, it it kind of makes sense, uh, especially, you know, the time of year, people reflecting a little bit, might be very um reasonable to to, yeah, go second half January there. Oh, my God. I like that more actually than the first week.
Yeah, and also it'd be good to communicate it that way. Like, as you say, it's a time of reflection, new year and all that. So you know, just say that to people, just say, look, you know, if you're going away, you know, is, can you reflect on what you've done? And the great achievements that we've done and the community we've built and come back and, you know, uh, in the, so that by the middle of January or so, we can, you know, put together our thoughts on on all this and communicate what we are achievements.
Are you saying that we should say what our new year for some resolutions are as a workgroup?
No, could be fun. That means if you're following up with no, then maybe it's not fun. I don't know.
I was just going to ask, did we do something like this last year or is this a new initiative?
No, not really. Um. No, would be the answer there. It's um something we, I feel we should be doing, but.
Yeah, definitely. And where's it going to be published?
Um, well, pretty much all the practicalities are blank right now. Um. Assuming it's somewhat decent, I would say the Singularity Net's uh blog. Um. Yeah, I think audience wise, that makes the most sense. Um.
Yeah.
Well, that that does make me wonder like, um. How to how to go about it? Basically, like, um, would it would it task force make sense? Would that be overkill? Uh, should we just have an open document and go, 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 uh, see what people come up with and then maybe suggest other workgroups to copy the cool stuff or? Any thoughts on that?
Quite like the idea of an open document and then maybe a a little task force to kind of edit and tweak. But I think part of it is also what the call out is. If we frame it right and we say to people, this is what we're looking for. This is the kind of thing we want.
Makes sense. Anybody else some thoughts on this? Both people in the room, of which at least six will be contributing um on their workgroup, if I estimate it. All right, no pressure. We're not publishing it today. Um. Um, ba 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 ba. Yeah, I guess getting some uh basically booking in a session and then during that session, we can either establish from those interested, a a task force and if it would somehow uh turn out that these sessions are, well, if if like ten minutes in, we feel it's a waste of time, then, yeah, we we're not obliged to have like, I don't know, multiple recurring meetings and stuff like that. Um.
I mean, as well as a a report, it'd be, I'd be nice to see it just translated into something a bit more um community, like like a vox pop, you know, so um, just like, I mean, it could be really, I don't want to overthink it, but like, let's say you do a report. You you uh it it kind of reflects the voices of ea- of each workgroup. And then you maybe have like a few seconds from someone from each workgroup or something. We would just say, you know, we just really summarise what they've done. And then that can we communicate online through social media or something.
That makes sense. Um, also, this doesn't have to be by definition like a twenty page uh document. Um. We also need readers, otherwise why even write it? Um. Yeah, I like that. Getting some uh bit of a personal touch in there, some quotes.
So are you thinking, Stephen, that it would be a video rather than a written text?
Yeah, it could be, but something really short, like, um. Again, so because there's a kind of balance here, isn't there, between like, oh, my God, people think, oh, my God, a report, lots of work and all that kind of thing, as you say, Peter. But to make it a bit more, not exactly fun, but an opportunity just to call out people, maybe, so uh in a good way, you know, to say, oh, so and so from this workgroup says this. So and so from this other workgroup says this. And it's like, it shows you the different voices there are, maybe, that's what I'm thinking. And that could be just a goo- good reflection of the work we do. Yeah, not exactly fun, maybe.
I mean, well, when you mentioned Fox Pop, um. I came from this from an article or blog kind of um approach. When you mentioned Fox Pop, that didn't kind of change that for me personally, but um.
No, no, exactly. It would be like a, it'd be like the, you know, that kind of principle where you have a really, you start with very, very broad and then you go down into detail. So just so the first thing that people can see is just like maybe a tweet or something where literally it's like a few seconds of someone speaking or something, and then you could just drill down into that and read more if you wanted to. That's the kind of basic idea, I suppose.
Yeah, fair. Hmm. Yeah, I haven't properly uh brainstormed on it, but can think of all kind of crazy supportive, um shorts tweets stuff. All right, um, hmm. So, yeah, ignore the the last line on the slide, uh, first week. As far as I'm concerned, the second half would be quite a bit better. Uh, thanks for that. Um. I think either tonight or tomorrow, I'll just um pretty much pick a slot for a session. Um. Also, um, it would be quite open for for asynchronous contributions, of course. And if at some point in the coming, well, let's say coming month, uh, you happen to have some great ideas, always feel free to uh yeah, either do it, I think, in the in the public setting or feel free to DM or anything. I think that kind of uh covers the topic for now. Quick check on the room. I'm just checking on the room as a preparation for the final slide, which is a check on the room. If there's uh like looking at the clock, we're one minute past the hour, but if there's some uh quick questions on other topics, feel free to speak up. And if not, um, that's it for now. It's a wrap. Next one. Yeah, next week, same time. Uh, will be the last one of the year, as we decided uh at the beginning of the call. And, yeah, before that, I hope to see you. Oh, I see your raised hand. Lilo, go for it.
Yeah, sorry, I was a little lost there for a second, um, in my mind, but, uh, hey, everybody. Um, next week we have our next session for uh Book Club. If people are still interested in doing that, we're going to be going over chapter three. Um, also next week, um, on the tenth, I think it's probably around or right after the Ambassador Tower Hall that um Anna Lois is a Eloin uh Alpha pre-launch game they're going to be having that. We'll put it on the calendar when they give us the event stuff. But if anybody's interested in trying a new game that's in the Alpha state, it's really cool. It's uh connected to AI and understanding deception, how you can be deceptive, um, and strategy. It's a card game mostly with fantasy vibe. So if anybody's interested, we'll make sure that gets on the calendar. Check it out. We're also going to do a solstice celebration for the game too, which is, I think, December twentieth. So that that will be hosted with Singularity Net and us. So we have a lot of fun things coming up if people want to try. I'll make sure that they get on the calendar so that you guys all know.
Awesome. Thanks a lot for that. Um, yeah, then just, I'm thinking a bit about the this uh next week uh being the last for the quarter, but um that does make me want to put a quick reminder to uh workgroup leads to check the calendar. Uh, and to make sure that the the sessions that are not taking place during the holiday season are the indeed removed from the calendar. So I I don't think I will be doing just a broad sweep clearing all the weeks. I think. Yeah, there might be some workgroups that want to continue and I wouldn't want to block them from that. Um, so, yeah, just a, a quick reminder to keep an eye on. All right, then that's it. Um, thank you all for being here, sharing your time with us and hope to see you on one of the. How many do we have? I think nine more community calls this week, and if not, uh, we'll see on Discord. Thanks all.
Thanks. Thanks for hosting, Peter.
And you for contributing.
Thanks, everyone.